Calls meeting to order. Start, let's let it leave. Check with your convenes and judge since you graced our presence today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is addition and changes to the agenda. Need to pull the treasurer report out of the consent agenda. Didn't have time since they reopened yesterday for that. To prepare that and pull that. Have any other changes?
Can we add to new business discussion on Upton's schedule for when we'll visit them this year?
Would you pull the final payment contractor and just go through?
Okay. Pull that too then?
And then the ramp.
Elevator ramp? Under new business?
Yeah. Under old business, I'd like to have discussion hopefully with the attorney that says he's supposed to be here, but if not, and when he can be present during meetings. If there's something we can do to help him with that, I'd like to discuss with him.
I'd like to, under old business, discuss our Zoom meetings and possibly recording our meetings ourselves. Discuss that a little bit and how we can approve that. I'd also like to discuss probably under old business volunteer boards. Possibly, you know, liaisons and advocates to the boards.
Anything else?
You think you're about to say something?
I'd like to also, under old business, discuss the meeting procedures and bylaws just for a minute.
Anything else?
I move to accept amended in agenda. Second.
Motion, proper second, to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Ayes have it. Next is electoral officers.
I would like to nominate Don Taylor for chairman of our board.
Second.
We don't need a second for a nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Ayes have it.
Congratulations.
I thought you were still in fact for you.
What?
I thought you were still in fact for you.
No.
So looking for nominations for the co-chair position. I would nominate Jared Wharton. Any discussion? Call to vote. Any, everybody for that? Please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Ayes have it.
Want this to hear it?
Yes, please.
Want to? Can we switch to maybe a break or something?
That's fine.
Alright, so we've already pulled the treasurer's report from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to do any vouchers. Take the next again to do vouchers.
Time now being 10:05, this will welcome any public comment. Is there any public comment? No public comment? Okay. We move on to the official newspaper. We have, we pulled the final payment of the contractor. We'll have to go down. We'll kind of review that.
Which contractor we talking about?
You asking me?
Yeah.
That was for the, the bridge on the duty room.
Okay.
To Tiburon Services.
Motion approved. The final payment for the contractor for duty room number two bridge.
Second. The motion approved on second. Discussion. Off that vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's against?
No, on the inside.
Alright, we're about five minutes ahead again. We're moving on to the official newspaper, so who wants to take the hot seat first?
No, I don't, please.
I do. You want me to read them out loud? Okay. I'm supposed to read them out loud. My apologies again. This first one is from the Weston County Gazette. It's as per your request, the Weston County Gazette would like to submit a bid for publishing Weston County's legal advertisements for the 2024 calendar year. As Clerk Becky Hadlock has requested, I have enclosed a sample publication, the written explanation as of the type, size, leading, and column width. I have also included a copy of the state statute. Wyoming State Statute 18-3-517-519 pertaining to the newspaper qualifications. I propose a price of $6 per line column inch. The same legal publication provided by Clerk Hadlock measured two columns by 22-inch, which is a total of 44-inch. The total cost of the publication would be $264. The column width for the Gazette is four, two inches. The column width is approximately four and five eighths inches. The spacing is eight point five. And the front, the font is the Times New Roman nine point with full justification. Our average distribution paper in addition for the past year is 632 regular print paper and e-copies with 569 of those as paid as stated in the annual statement of ownership filed with the United States Postal Service. This amount exceeds the requirement of 500 paid subscribers as per the statute listed above and included in the proposal. Our subscription rates are $32 a year for regular subscription in the 827 zip code area and $37 outside the 827 area code. Subscribers can buy or renew their subscription on our website at www.westoncountyguazette.com or by traditional means. Our over the counter price is 75 cents per issue. We are a member of the Wyoming Press Association and the Newspaper Association. The legal notices are distributed digitally on our website at www.westoncountyguazette.com and the Westin, oh, excuse me, and the Wyoming Press Association site, column.us also. I would remind the commission, I am the only locally owned Weston County publication which qualifies for the submission of a bid employing a veteran and living in Weston County, supporting the local tax base. We have covered the county business extensively throughout the years. Our economic rates are a win for the county during this time when the budget is tight. I've enjoyed working with the county staff and elected officials for many years, and I have always had amicable dealings with all of them. I hope to continue to do so in the future. Thank you for your consideration. Lisa, is that?
Lobassar.
Lobassar. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
The next bid is from the Newsletter Journal. Weston County Commission enclosed is a copy of the minutes of the August 1st, 2023 meeting of the Weston County Commissioners as they would have appeared in the legal advertisement section of the Newsletter Journal. The legals are set up on an eight column page with a column width of one and three sixteenths inches. The legals are printed in nine-point hectare type, excuse me if that's pronounced wrong, with a 10-point leading. The Newsletter Journal had a total average distribution of 1,572 or 1,493 print, paid digital subscriptions, 79 issues per week in 2023, and that is well in excess of the required minimum weekly distribution of 500 that is set by the Wyoming Statute 18-3-519. We publish 52 weeks a year as is also required in the statute and are a full member of the Wyoming Press Association. The Newsletter Journal is a legal publication under Wyoming law. In an effort to provide consistency for your constituents and our readers, we have begun offering a 15% discount off our standard legal publication rate to local government entities that designate the newsletter journal as their legal newspaper for 2023. The minutes for this particular meeting occupied a total of 90 column inches and at the discounted rate of $10.50 per column, which is the same as last year. The total cost of printing this set of minutes would be $945. When you consider your choice for legal publication for Weston County, we ask you to consider that the Newsletter Journal is read by more Weston County residents than any other publication that is eligible to publish county legal notices. We also provide our notices free to all viewers on our website, which continues to average more than 1.8 million hits per month over the past year. Stats enclosed. Our weekly email newsletter and social media platforms offer more engagement with thousands of users and followers checking in each month. The county's legal notices would be available directly on our website in a searchable format. That website is updated frequently and well maintained. We also provide links to our legal notices on our social media and through our weekly email newsletter. New C now to make them even more readily available to the public. We believe our successful efforts to modernize and reach a larger audience through digital means sets us apart from other newspapers in Weston County and should be weighed heavily when considering the value presented to the county and its residents by the Newsletter Journal's bid. If you have any questions about this bid submission, I invite you to contact me by phone. I will keep my schedule clear and be available for a call when this is discussed at your January 2nd meeting. I stand ready to respectfully offer any explanations or assistance I can provide to you in making this very important decision. Considereably, Robert Bonner.
Those stats that are supposed to speak in the session.
As we're looking at it all, can this up for any discussion that we may want to have and have anything we'd like to discuss?
I'm trying to determine the numbers that I've got are 264 and 945. Are these the correct numbers as far as the per print column?
That price there, that is for the sample of the board. So we're comparing this exact same.
So on the newsletters bid, does that include us being on your digital platform? As far as not, not just the digital platform of the paper, but the one you talked to us about? We talked, I can't remember when that was. We talked with you about having a possible hit mark where if you put us in there, it would lead people to our website. Would that be part of this? Do you know what I'm talking, remember what I'm talking about?
Yeah, and we discussed that last year recently.
Yes.
So you're saying with the legal, the actual legal link to like your website?
I guess, would that be part of this?
This is just for the legals though.
This is just for legal?
I believe Mr. Bonner made a presentation to us about advancing the, not the podcast, but his website, which I don't think is involved in this.
He is there right now if you want to ask him.
I don't think there's sound of it.
Oh.
Is that software?
I mean, I could just call and ask him if you wanted to.
Is yours on? Yes.
He should be able to hear you now. If he hears.
Mr. Bonner, can you hear us?
It just come back on, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Bonner, I've had a question. You talked to us last year about your website, about the possibility of putting something on your website that would lead people to the county website. Will you give us a little presentation about that?
Yeah, I mean, I will still offer the city and the, not the city, excuse me, the school district and the hospital district are both on that plan. Where they are already, we're the official publication. They're our, so they have a weekly presence. Just there's actually a couple advertisers who do it as well, who advertise every week in the Newsletter Journal. For $100 a week, I rounded it to 5,000 a year. We run at least two ad spots a week on the website, on our newsletter. We'll use our podcast, we'll use our videos. I'm leaving one out, Walter might have to help me. We've got enough stuff going on out there now. Oh, and our social media, our Facebook, in particular in that community, is really a pretty powerful tool. So it guarantees placement. It's very nice, especially the Facebook thing. If you do have a special meeting where that's a gray area with technology sort of accelerating and making things more possible to do things on the fly. Stuff like special meetings where we couldn't put notices in the newspaper in time because the meeting came out before the newspaper did. We can put that online. And it's just, it's basically a phone caller emailed one of us and we get your notice posted right away.
But that would, that would be an additional cost, correct, Bob?
No, 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 no. That comes in, what I said, if you get a minimum of two posts a week. What I'm doing right now, I have, I actually have the inventory. Hopefully the day comes when I have to get a little stingier with it, but we've created enough products, online products, and we have enough following on four or five of them that I guarantee you at least two posts a week. If you need a third or a fourth, the school district and the hospital district are probably getting three or four a week over our various platforms right now. What I do is guarantee you at least two every week. There's always an ad on the website. So that's the other thing. If you have a special meeting, you call in, we change out the ad you have on the website to the one about the special meeting. So you'll always have a presence on the website. That's constant, plus one other ad somewhere almost every week at a minimum.
Bob, I think you missed one.
Oh, it kind of takes care of your online advertising. 5,000 bucks a year sort of covers everything. In the newspaper, you pay for things individually, but 5,000 a year would cover it all online.
But Vera's question is if the legal publication of 945 will direct people to her website? Correct?
Yes, like, like would you throw that in as part of our, our deal instead of being an extra charge?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. If I understand you right, yes, all of these ads are going to link to the county's website. Some of them, if you have a specific ad that wants to say, look at the county minutes, I'll link to that page of your website. Every, every ad we run online, we provide either a click-through link or a typed-out link that, that people can click on or sometimes they have to cut and paste depending on the platform. But everything we do, if you want, if that steady every week ad on our website is, come to Weston County website, learn about your county government, follow what's going on, we can just have that on our website constantly, 24/7. People click on it and go to the county's website as part of that.
But it would be $100 additional per week?
Yes.
Okay.
For the digital package, I thought, yes, it's.
Yes, Lisa, I was going to let you comment.
I'm Lisa Lobassar, owner of Weston County Gazette. I'd like to introduce my right-hand people. I've been out for three months, Brittany and Nicholas Trangle, and I'm sure you're all familiar with them. And they've been taking care of it all. So I just want to acknowledge that in front of you guys. The offer that Mr. Bonner has, has nothing to do with selecting a legal newspaper by statute. So what we are here to discuss today is that only. That is what this is about. And we qualify for that. We have our minimum. We have great rates. I'm not apologizing for that. We don't have as many subscribers. But those people that are interested in coming and finding those things, they know where to go to do that. We've had the bid for 20 some years since I've been here. We missed maybe three years of that, that we shared that. At that point, at which time I also heard, I had many people contact me about the podcast that was said that I quit that in the middle of that. That was not true. I went to the end of the year with that contract and I chose not to renew that at that time. And there were various reasons for that. And I just want to make sure that we're focusing on the legal bid for printing of this, of the legal notices of the county. That's what the bid is about.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept the Weston County Gazette bid for our legal newspaper for the county for the next coming year.
I've got a motion on the floor. So I hear second. Discussion?
We should, yeah, this is strictly based on the dollar amount, because as we all know, we're getting our money is being tighter. For one time, we're going to have to maybe start cutting things, but the Weston County Gazette meets all the statutory requirements required by the state to be our official publication, so that's why I based it on financials and they meet all those criteria.
I'd like to add in there, just my comment on it is the same as it always has been. I, we are in a tight budget and money does matter, but I, I've always felt that information is important for the constituents and getting it out there. I have nothing against the Gazette at all, they have some good reporting, and the paper is a good paper. But I've always felt like there are two papers in the county and that at minimum we should alternate. They have had it for a while, the question then becomes money and it is, it is tight, but how much does it cost for the lack of information? Which isn't to imply that there's not enough information in your paper, but it does imply that the circulation and who it goes out to, at times says, in my opinion, doesn't get to everybody. That's my two cents worth of that.
Any other discussion?
My shift to have is with our budget, obviously there is a price difference between the two. Are we, are we budgeted to consider either newspaper?
There's not a lot left in there. Just because we have to run it in the Newsletter Journal at the higher rate, not at the lower rate of the Gazette. Because when we run it in both papers, that wasn't budgeted for. Because when we run it in the Gazette at the low rate, and then when we run it in the Newsletter Journal to the high rate.
How will we feel if they budget it?
Um, so I do have what you did spend with us last year. You spent a total of four thousand eight sixty-nine twenty-five with us last year. So, and that was only for the courthouse closures, board opening, special meeting notices, and help wanted ads. And then Suzie ran her large delinquent tax notice listing, which alone was two thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. So for those things that I listed off, you spent a total of two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars with the seventeen hundred journal.
So right now for Suzie's tax stuff, she's got seven thousand left in hers. For print publishing, there is seventeen hundred dollars left.
What kind of reason to the Newsletter Journal now, as far as?
Everything that's, except for that.
Bob, is the Newsletter Journal a Wyoming company? I mean, is it part of a Wyoming company?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Todd, Rob Dix lives in Buffalo, he's the majority owner. I, of course, lived in Newcastle for forty years. And I've heard a lot, I guess, if, if we're going to address stuff that somehow I don't have a local company. You've got Kim and Walter sitting in there earning paychecks. I have a pretty sizable staff. Uh, one of the biggest staffs on Main Street as far as private businesses go in Newcastle anymore, so. Yes, I've heard several times that since I moved, maybe my company wasn't local, uh, but we're a very much local company. Every bit as much as Revinery, Edward Jones, anybody else on the street. So we are very much a local business.
Thanks, Bob. My question just revolves around the fact of the bidding process and local versus non-local, that's the only reason I have. Thank you.
Um, I guess I, I agree with Chairman Taylor in that I, I feel like it would be nice if we could, maybe every other year, you know, trade off to give both papers equal opportunity to represent the county. I know that the money part is, is what's really getting me right now. It's, it's a difficult decision. Um, I think they're both good papers, I think they both do a really good job for our county, and it's a difficult decision for, for us to make.
There's a motion on the floor and property seconded. Any other discussion? I'll call it to vote. All those in favor of accepting the Gazette as our county newspaper, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes, the Gazette is the official county newspaper. Thank you both for coming in, appreciate your bids, and I do appreciate the work that our committee board does too, that all, that you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're a little bit behind, moving on to a vault side update.
I can do that. Uh, I have a contract draft that I finally discovered, you guys need to apologize. Uh, the holiday and everything, behind, but. You guys want to take a look at it and let me know at the next meeting whether you approve it or not. It has a twenty percent one-year term, or made the term automatically renewable, so we don't have to come back every year. Interest, I don't know, they're going to agree to that, but I have interest bearing on any unpaid amounts that has to be paid by the end of the month each month. And I'll leave from Becky the, um, what they owe us, and just put that amount in there. Other than that, you know, a large part of the contract was based, not, we've got the term provisions worked out and some extra stuff to protect you guys, but as far as the software language, I used the most of the old contract for that, because that stuff's way above my head. I mean, as far as, you know, the technicalities of that stuff, so. But I'm going to probably do a little research on that, just to make sure there's nothing, you know, that's missing as far as the technology portion.
So you don't want interest on what they owe us from March, you just want what they would have paid us?
Um, I don't know if we really talked about that.
How much do they still owe us?
A lot.
They haven't paid since like March.
At the high rate?
I mean, I, I personally feel maybe there should be some interest, they've owed, you know, six, seven months worth of it.
I don't think the old contract provided for it, no.
Did the old contract apply for monthly payments?
Um, yeah.
So they're actually, in reverse, if you was a business, they would get finance services.
Right.
In the old, uh, in the old contract, what was the agreement on the monthly payment?
Oh, what was it, like sixty-five percent?
Sixty-five or eight, I think it's.
Sixty-five and eighty, because there's two different kinds of, there wasn't just one lump sum.
Anything in that contract that, uh, if they were default on the payment, any? And this company?
It was such a bad contract.
I could, I just feel the monopoly and, I mean, everything was laid in the lap, if they choose not to pay the, the agreed amount, what the repercussions are other than?
Other than you consume them.
Right, I mean, there's always that option, but.
That's why I was like putting that interest provision in there, give them an extra incentive. Depending on, you know, the last day of the month.
It's going to be a huge amount, they would pay us to chump change.
Well, and I was, I was thinking, I mean, is our, is our intent by withholding the interest to stimulate the payment? I mean, I don't know why we would be doing a favor if we were withholding interest on it.
On the past two months?
Right.
I don't think the past contract had anything like that in it, but we still want the higher amount paid. If I do the math right in my head, I'm not a mathematician, but I think it's at least twenty grand, isn't it, that they are?
Oh, at least, because we were getting anywhere between five to seven thousand a month from them.
This is the, but the contract was for monthly payments, right? But there was no provision in the signed contract before for if they were late, or if there was any penalties for not paying?
No.
But we have a new contract, is there anything in that contract?
Yeah, I put in there, they pay, they have to pay by the end of the last day of the month each month, about twenty percent. And if they don't, it bears interest at the rate, ten percent.
Have you done a letter in writing asking how we haven't been paid yet, or?
Uh, well, we were getting this contract done and, you know, they threatened to just dissolve. So, but we have, we have an agreement in writing from Mr. Campbell, on an email saying he's going to pay you guys the county back for unpaid amounts.
Do we have a timeframe?
I put upon execution of the contract.
So do we want to put this contract on hold business? If you, what do you still have to do with it?
I just want you guys to take a look at it if you want, and make sure it all looks good to you guys. But those are the, some of the things I was thinking of to add into there.
Will you email the contract to the commissioners?
Yep, I do.
Make sure that we look at it, and we can put it on hold business to make sure to review it before the end of the month.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Congress?
I, I was going to ask Becky, have you gotten your, your scanners and everything?
Oh, I was going to update you guys, I didn't have to purchase the scanners, because, so I can take what they already scanned, and Charles showed me how I can take those and split them out by the documents and just attach those in. So we did not have to purchase these.
That's amazing.
I was pretty sure I could do that, but I needed Charles to show us how, so we can take them off of the, um, hard jump drives that they already scanned them on. Put those on each of our, our computers, each of those books that are already scanned, and just break those out. And then I talked to, um, my point of contact at Tyler Tech, and he showed us how we can attach those. So we're not going to have to scan them, we're not going to have to spend the four hundred dollars on each scanner.
So what, what is your opinion on how long it could be till we could possibly go with a different company if we had to?
So it's still going to be time-consuming, because, I mean, it's, it's only when there's downtime, but it's not going to be as time-consuming, because we're not going to have to scan them or any of that stuff, so it's still going to be a couple years, I'll probably, but it's just not going to cost us as much.
And Michael, this is our contract, is that a month-to-month now, the new contract with, with Lotside?
Year-to-year.
Year-to-year, okay.
So, any other discussion? Appreciate the updates, Michael, and you'll get that emailed out to the commissioners so that they can review it, or put it on hold business for the next reading term, and we can finish it up.
It's better than I thought it was going to be when I was talking about the split.
Yeah, well, when I talked to Alicia a couple weeks ago, we were looking at maybe seven tops, but we're up to nine, potentially ten, we had a new kid move in, um, that might be wrestling as well and joining the team now. You know, so a little bit behind the, behind the start. So that's going to put us in a, in a problem when it comes to duels. You know, we're not going to win a lot of duels, because we don't have anybody over a hundred and sixty pounds. So, uh, you know, we're going to give up forty points.
Right.
In every duel's beat. So obviously, it's going to be tough to make that up. We do have some good returns.
Well, you get a couple of baddies off the couch and have them put the pop tarts down and.
Right?
You can give people a run for their money.
Yeah.
Probably going to get in trouble for that one too, but.
Yeah, you might, you might.
Come on, Evvies, get out there and, and go wrestle.
Okay, moving on to the handbook. Who wants to start that?
Well, um, a couple things, I started looking for, um, different places, I looked at twenty out of the twenty-three counties' handbooks, and, um, looking at, looking for wording for our vacation, um, help. And I started putting things together, but the, I honestly, the more I did it, the more confused I made myself. Um, I'd like to have Jeannie involved in that wording being a legal thing. It gets a little complicated if we were deciding, I know we kind of decided to let everyone get their, their vacation in January for the coming year. We talked about that. But new employees possibly having the ability to use their vacation as they earn it, not demand. So that's, that's where it got a little confusing. I did not find any, anyone who gives their, their people their vacation in January. All of them were from start date to anniversary date, that's when your vacation started. Um, some of them, and some of them do earn a day a month like we do, so. I guess, um, the other thing I noticed in our handbook is we didn't talk about how much our maximum carryover for vacation is. And I think responsibility-wise, we should have a maximum that you can carry over. Everything I found was normally two hundred and forty hours carryover, but if you don't use it in that next year, you, you lose it. You can carry over up to two hundred and forty hours, if you don't use it in that year, you lose it. That, that would help us in the event of a, a long-term employee retiring or, or quitting and having a whole lot of vacation to pay out.
So it does have carryover up until June of the following year? And you don't have it, by then you lose it.
Where is it in the new handbook, because I couldn't find it, if you can help me?
She might not have put it in there, but let's see, because it's in the old one right now.
I couldn't find it, so that would be something we need to add.
Yeah, I don't think the new one addressed the carryover, but the way the old one had, if you carried any vacation into the new, what you accrued in this year, you had to have it used by the end of June this next year. I'd, I'd put, try to put something together for like the new employees, right? I kind of thought, right, is they can, every month they send in their day.
Oh, yeah, right here. The employee will have until the following, well, hold on, this is, that's in the new books. Yes, so starting on twenty, page twenty-seven.
Of the?
Of the most recent one.
Okay, I've been, okay.
It says, when a department agency needs to prevent an employee from using vacation in excess of the maximum carryover, upon approval of the department agency administrator and the Weston County Board of Commissioners, the employee will have until the following June thirtieth to utilize excess vacation.
Okay, so we need to make sure that that's in the new?
It is, it is.
It is, oh, that is the new.
That's what I'm telling you.
I'm sorry.
On page twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay, okay, thank you, Becky, I appreciate it. Okay, okay, thank you, Becky. I appreciate that. Good.
Yeah, but I was trying to, trying to word it together. I know the proper wording, but here are new employees. After they've worked one month, they get a day, they can use it, but they, you know. If they accrue or earn like six days, after six months, they can take six days. That way, they don't have to wait till their first year is totally completed before they can take any vacation.
Yeah.
Because the way it's worded is, you have to work your twelve months before you get, are able to take a day of vacation. And then a lot of companies, they will, January one, you get your, your, your vacation certified to for that year, even though you may, you haven't reached your anniversary date for that year. So, I mean, we need, there's gotta be, we need to figure out a happy medium in here. So the new employees aren't punished after they've worked that they don't get to take vacation until they've worked a full year, even though they've earned twelve days in that timeframe. And the way the handbook reads now, I'm, I'll choose like Jimmy. He's got twenty, over twenty years in. If he used all his vacation last year, this year today, he can't take any vacation until he's accrued it out, even though he's worked here twenty years. Most companies, after you've had that first, first year in.
Bested, yeah.
Yep, after your first full year is, then after that year, you're, say you're, you can earn ten days of vacation next year, whatever it may be. January one, you get to ten days is the way a lot of the companies do it. You know, I thought about two is if on the, if they're doing it by a month, accruing, I'll just use like June for an example. Okay, they work, they hired in June, they worked twelve months. As of March, they was, after they had in March, they had eleven days. Well, in June, that gave them the twelve, they could have their twelfth day. But there's six months left, so you take that, that last six months and can give it to them after their anniversary date. Yeah, they've worked a full year, but then they, after that first year, then they get what should be coming to them as a long-term employee. But only, but they don't get the whole, until they work that first twelve-month period. After that twelve-month period, then they are awarded the rest of their year's, that year's, current year's vacation.
So you're saying use that for a new person coming in?
Yeah, for the new person. And there's one thing else that doesn't address is, okay, I'm nine-year, I'm a nine-year employee, my anniversary is in this coming year, right, turn my tenth year. Do I accrue vacation for my ten years all through this year? Or do I have to wait till the year, till my anniversary date before I accrue my tenure vacation?
I know, now you get to put that all on a spreadsheet. Everything you just said.
I mean, it's, it's
There's a cut, there's several different things to start questioning.
It's going, it's, one, this is, we opened a can of worms looking at this, I mean. And it's something we as an employer have to get down in writing. So we have consistency through every department.
So, so what happens if, if we get a new employee and they get some time and they leave before they've earned that initial vacation? So then, a month after they've been here, for example?
If, if they've worked a month, they get, they get their eight, oh, is it eight hours?
You don't get it till the end of the
End of that month.
But some of the department heads were giving it in advance, the ones that were accruing it, were giving it in advance, like say you wanted to take a week vacation, they were letting them bank it. That's where they're gonna run into trouble because they've already given it and there's no way to get that back. That's where, that's where the accrue unit can come into trouble.
I was thinking about that part. So I thought, uh, I came up with a little paragraph and, of course, this is just, um, I said, "If any employee is terminated voluntary or involuntary for any reason during the year and vacation hours have been used that are not yet earned, the employee will be responsible for paying back in cash value or credit from hours worked, vacation hours that have not yet been earned according to the month-to-month accrual schedule."
But can you hold paid, I don't think you can hold a final paycheck without, can you? I mean, legally, we can't do that.
You won't be holding it, you're deducting it.
You can take back what they owe you.
You're deducting what they got in advance and used in advance. Basically, basically, you're gonna be deducting in advance in their paycheck that they have paid back.
You can do that because you've already given it to them.
That's, I, I never thought of that paragraph. That's a really good paragraph to put in there. That way, like a twenty-year employee, they get however many, say they get four weeks of vacation. January third, they take four weeks of vacation. You know, March, they quit, well, you're gonna have to pay back all the vacation that you didn't accrue through that year. You know.
The vacation part.
That's, but they can, but they can get, they can use it that year, so if they worked a whole year, no big deal. But if they, if they quit before they've got to the end of that year, then it's paid back.
For a term?
Yep. Yeah. It, I, it sounds complicated, but if we ever, if we get the right wording
Right.
and a basically example on paper, I think it would be very, it'd be easily understood.
And I think if we, I was trying to think of ways to simplify the new employee. So, um, I was thinking about partial months not counting. So if you go to work, um, example, if you, if you were hired February fourteen, fifteen, half, that half month wouldn't count and you wouldn't get your first, first day till April first. Because if you start doing half months here and there, boy, it's gonna get really confusing.
So you're saying February, wouldn't it be March first?
It would be, it would be April first because you
You'd work a full month.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You have to work a full month, each full month. So you'd say each full month you work, you get a day. And that, a little stinky for if you get hired the fifth of the month. However, I don't know how else to keep it simplified.
It would have to be because you can't run it backwards.
Right, yeah.
You know, if you went to their, their anniversary date, it would be, if we have a lot of new employees in the year, we don't have a lot, you can track it by anniversary date, but by making it the first, the first of the month.
Well, and that's how it is on insurance.
Yep.
You don't retro back, you have to retro forward.
Your question, your thing that you thought of about the bumping up into the next category somewhere during the year, that's something that
Yep. Yeah, that was, that was an apt thought. It's like, well, what happens if your anniversary date is November first, you know? Now, so you've got ten months, do I accrue that vacation for that year? That term for that category, you gotta wait till the next year.
I, I still feel at this point we could go ahead and approve, um, the handbook. With us having, maybe we should have a, a workshop time with Jeannie to go over the wording. We've decided, from my understanding, after the last meeting, and now we've decided kind of what we're gonna do as far as giving all full-time employees their, their, um, vacation in January except for new employees. And then come January, then they start with everyone else. Correct?
That's your top.
Since we've got fifty minutes still to discuss this, so I, I'd like to, I've got a number of other things besides just the, um, vacation I'd like to look at quick too. So, I mean, if you guys want to continue vacation, I'm fine with that. I mean, that's, I think we need to get a piece of paper out and probably start writing these ideas down so that we can give them to somebody, but whenever we're done with that, before we approve vacation, I think there's a few things that I'd just like to bring up before we approve the handbook. And I don't know what you guys have preferred to do first.
Well, I mean, we have that time, so I'm looking, I mean, if we wanna continue the vacation discussion and roll into what you'd like to talk to, I'll give the back, it's up to the board. So to make a couple notes, one, we won't, we don't want any partial months credit. Is that correct?
Yeah, just like we do on the insurance.
And then somebody give me a low down again on, so if it's a new employee, how would it, how would we handle that? Just give me a review on that. A new employee would earn vacation after one month's time?
Just like, I wrote this down last night, but new employees will be compensated eight hours of vacation each month employed on their monthly anniversary date, which we could change that to the first of the month, after they've worked one complete month. To be at their discretion, pending supervisor's approval. At their one-year anniversary date, which we, we could change that to after twelve months of full-time employment, they could be, they'd be rewarded, they'd be awarded the remainder of their vacation actually throughout that year. So like if you was hired in June, when you got there, your first twelve months work done, you would actually get additional fifty-six hours because that would take you out to the end of the year. Or we could leave that as just your eight hours per month to that, till you've completed the full calendar year. You know. Not, not a calendar year from day of hire, full calendar year from January to December, you're gonna have to work that. Then after that, you'll accrue, you could accrue one day a month for twenty-three months if you were hired February first. You know, if you're hired January first, you work twelve months, then you'll start getting awarded exactly. So if you were hired anywhere in the middle of any time, any portion of a year, you'd have to work that year and the whole calendar year next year before you got awarded to you. But you would accrue it as one day a month. Then after you've worked that full calendar year from January to December, the next January, you get awarded what would be coming. And what we got now is real confused.
And really, they're not even following what
No.
I guess I'm not really in favor of giving them, anybody a lump sum, you know, say half of it at the six-month timeframe. I, uh, I don't have a major issue with giving them per month, you know, until they approved a year.
It seemed like it was set there, but it was actually, you worked that year and then you had, say, five months left towards your, that full calendar year. You've worked a year, but that full calendar year won't be open for, oh, just like five months left, you know. But I mean, we could go, you could go, you could word it as you have to work January to December, one full calendar year before you start getting awarded your lump sum.
That's, okay.
And then in that, that paragraph that Mr. Buber had about if you quit or voluntary or involuntary leave, if you've used that, that you haven't actually accrued through that year, you owe it back. That protects us as an employer, but yet gives the employee that benefit. It kind of protects, it's the best of both worlds there for both of us.
So let me make sure I got what you're saying. So they, they would earn their eight hours every month, accrue. And then once they work, okay, so I started in March.
Okay.
And my first day, my first one comes in May because I, I started halfway through the year. So I have a day a month or, or eight hours of credit each month. And then I have to go the next month, or the next year and work January through December, accruing the same way.
Yeah, it's true, accrue it the same way.
And then I go in and I'm grandfathered in with everyone else, starting in January at that
At the following year. So, so if you were hired in twenty-three, you've gotta work your months in twenty-three. You accrue one day a month all the way through twenty-four. Then January one of twenty-five, that's when you were awarded your lump sum. That you will actually accrue through the year because if you leave before that year's over, you're gonna pay back what you used, that you haven't accrued.
I actually think that's a really good idea.
That, that, that actually makes a lot of sense, thank you.
You know, I didn't know how to quite word it in there, but it's like, but if that's how you, if you're, it worked best, if I'd use as an example. If I, I was hired in March, I have to work through May, April before I get my day because
Right.
that, we're not gonna deal with the partial month. If you were hired March first, then April first you would get it. If you wanna get hired on, you wanna hire the first day, otherwise you may work a partial month without accruing vacation.
Well, April thirty-first, you'd get it.
Yeah, but after that, you worked that month, so you may work, well, you worked eight months. You're there, the next year, you have to work that whole full year, but you accrue it as one day a month to there.
Okay.
You know, in twenty-three, you'll do part of it, and in twenty-four, you'll accrue it. And then after you've worked a full consecutive twelve-month calendar year, then January one, you get awarded your
But all of the old employees that have been here forever already get their lump sum January first.
Yeah.
They've already been invested.
So we need, we need to put that wording in there because the way it reads, they have to accrue it. So if they, if they get four weeks, you know, and they work, January one, they had accrued it for that year. They, and they take it, vacation and they quit, a week later, they have to pay it back.
And that, that first year, they're just gonna have to understand that if they want a week off, they're gonna have to not take any breaks for five days.
What about an employee that's in limbo right now? They haven't been here a full year yet. They just were hired like a few months ago. Are we gonna count them as a new employee?
They go back retro after their hire date and that's a month, then?
And then let them, yeah, so they, they can accumulate, say I have one that started, I don't even know for sure when she started.
Just pick a day.
Four or five months ago. So I'm gonna retro her back to when she started accumulating it. But she's gonna be counted as a new employee.
Say she got hired July fifteenth. She wouldn't get a day until the end of August. She gets a date, so she has August, September, October, November, December. So she's entitled to five days right now. Yeah.
Right.
Will that, just to devil's advocate, will that discourage any hiring? Or somebody might say, well, jeez, I'm not going to work the fifteenth because I don't even start earning my vacation till the first. I don't know that it will, but will that be a problem?
That's their decision to be made.
Yeah, I mean, somebody gets a position filled if they're letting out.
Yes, I don't think so because, I mean, that's how the insurance already is. It's, you're starting in the middle of the month anyways and
Yeah, you're not eligible till
You wait until
I think it's a really good idea.
Yes, I think you just solved one of our problems. Thank you.
Killed seventy-two brain cells, but I got it.
That's good. Are we gonna go page by page?
Commissioner Board. I was just asking, I, I think we're all on the same page in the understanding of the agreement there. Do we have a simple way of writing that down so we can vote on this as a board?
I, I think before we vote out, we need to actually have a rule of view.
Right.
I mean, today's not the day to vote on vacation thing. I mean, we've got a good idea here, we need to get it in writing.
At our last meeting, I think we said by the end of January, so we have another meeting in there. But if we can, we need to figure out who's going to write it and make sure that commissioners get it so that we're not going round and round with the next meeting. We've already seen it, we can move forward.
If you'd like, I can, um, take your notes and hit with Jeannie and make sure our, our wording is legal.
Yeah.
And go from there.
I came up with the concept, I just didn't know the wording, how to do it.
That's the tough part.
Thank you, Commissioner Rymer, for that. That's
Yes.
Reach out if you have a wording you need on my station.
Thank you.
I had to work down on day to day.
Commissioner, you'll reach out to Jeannie Stone and give what we need so that, and give it to the commissioners so that we and we'll move that portion into discussion of our next agenda on the old business. And hopefully we'll be able to get that seen out. Commissioner Todd, you don't have to move on to others' issues.
Yeah, I read this whole thing and it's semi-painful. There's redundant things multiple times, whatever. I mean, it's not the end of the world, it's just a lot of redundancy in places that there's probably more need to be I mean, just copying things that have already been said and throughout it, but and then when I get back to like, I don't know, some of this stuff, a lot of it is more for, towards the end, it's more geared towards the, uh, employees' actual supervisor, I would say, but, um, but Jeannie agreed to it, so I'm willing to look at it and, uh,
How are you?
Try to figure something out. Uh, we went to page, and I got a couple of just little minor things that page four exempt employee where it categorizes the levels of who you are and what you do, whatever. It says, "An employee who is not eligible for overtime or compensatory pay that do keep a timesheet. County classifies exempt employees through the guidelines established by the FLSA." We do need to keep some form of a timesheet though for, um, purposes of logging time off. And, um, things like that, so I think some little blurb needs added in there about that personally. Um, the next page on call time, this whole paragraph is just kind of odd to me. "An employee who is required to remain on-call on the employer's premises or so close thereto that he or she cannot use the time effectively for his or her own purposes is working while on-call." I mean, I thought if I was at my side of work, I'm working, I, I guess I don't understand that sentence. "An employee who is not required to remain on the employer's premises but is merely required to leave work at his or her home," I think that should probably be from instead of at. "Or with company officials where he or she may be reached is not working while on-call, unless a very short response time within a few minutes is required, and such response period is unreasonable." I'd like Jeannie to look at that paragraph again and see if there's a way that fits out a little better.
Make it easier to understand and.
Yeah, I, the very first sentence is odd to me. "If you're required to leave somewhere, you are on the job."
I think that could be cleaned up a little bit and made easier to understand for, for us laymen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, page eleven, under employee records, it's, I think it's just a typo. Misrepresentation of any fact or information. It says P R O V E D, I'm assuming it's supposed to be provided by an employee. It'd be in the fourth paragraph down, I followed it.
Okay.
Or is that a word that I don't?
No, that's a term.
Uh, transfers, page fifteen, five oh two. Very first paragraph on, on the bottom of the page under transfers. "When it goes to employees accepting a transfer between county agencies, will retain their original hire date as a regular full-time or part-time employee working twenty or more hours per week for the purpose of calculating Weston County years of service." Is that an accurate thing, Becky? Do we log if they have twenty hours of work as a part-time employee? We don't give them any other benefit, right?
They don't get benefits if they're part-time.
So somehow maybe this whole sentence is taken out of the thing, right?
I think so, because we don't, we don't really have part-time people correct. We usually do contract people if we're doing part-time.
And if we do, you're, you, you don't get any.
Well, Michael has part-time in his office, Kim's part-time.
And that says under, here in the definition, the part-time employee. Which is, an employee who is normally scheduled to work less than thirty hours, which qualifies. But part-time employees are not afforded any benefits other than wages. So I think Jeannie ought to look at that again. Page eighteen. "County reserves the right to require employees to take comp time off as directed by their elected official. Comp time shall be used within three months of accumulation or is approved by elected official, shall be used within the same fiscal year." Are we doing that?
Yeah, but it, it's not used within the same fiscal year. If my employee gets comp time December thirty, they can't use it by December thirty-first. They have to use it though within three months.
So I need something.
So three months accumulation.
And then it states that it must be used.
Just the fiscal year needs to be taken out, because.
I agree.
Even if you use it, gain it in November, you can't use it either in December.
Right.
Page twenty-one.
Wait, I have one on eighteen. So the, the paragraph, "When compensation time is requested," that's repeated right there. It just needs to be removed. It says, "When comp, comp time is requested," and then it says comp time, and then it's repeated again. It seems to be removed right there.
Anything else there, Becky?
Um, on page twenty, under employee benefits. Weston County does not have employee long-term disability insurance, that needs to be removed. We, we can't put that in there when we don't offer it. And then on twenty-one, the second paragraph down. "In addition, the human resource designee is available to answer employee questions concerning benefits and to counsel new employees, employees as they achieve eligibility, retiring employees, and non-employee beneficiaries as to specific benefit coverage required forms and designations." That is not the HR, under HR, that is under the clerk's office.
Which part, Becky?
That last sentence, okay, so it's the second paragraph and then the last sentence. "In addition, the human resource designee is available to answer employee questions concerning benefits and to counsel new employees, employees as they achieve eligibility, retiring employees, and non-employee beneficiaries as to specific benefit coverage required forms and designations." That is the county clerk's office, not HR.
Should you strike out the human resource?
Well, I think it's how you look at it though, because your office is payroll, the payroll part, so.
Your own benefits.
And benefit forms and stuff come back to you. But if we had a human resources person, they would go over all of the counseling part of it and then give you the forms.
No, my office does payroll and everything associated with payroll, which is the benefits and all of the beneficiary forms.
To pay the benefits, that's your part. That's your part. But to a HR person would be the counseling of, of going over all of that. And then the forms can due for payroll, because that's a human resources responsibility.
Orientation is, is HR. If you're ori- orientating somebody.
All of the forms that go with signing up new employees is in my office. These required forms don't go through HR. None of that goes through HR.
If they're a benefit form for payment, I, I see the interpretation that you're, what you're saying. I, I'm just telling you, my opinion is, is if you don't, an orientation is not handing somebody a packet and going, here, bring this back to me next week and. I'm not saying, it isn't, but there have been times when we have skipped over those, so orientation is very important. So would this be considered orientation? Obviously, the benefits and the payroll are done at the clerk's office, and what you do is the payments of those, anything to do with those. But for example, are you, are you responsible statutorily for sexual harassment training? No, that isn't something that falls under the clerk. But that would be part of orientation, that's what I'm trying to get at, is this part of orientation?
So in, uh.
Sure.
Earlier in that paragraph, it says, "The administrator is responsible for all communication and disclosure concerning county benefits." And administrator, aren't they deferring to county clerk?
At one time, we had an administrator though, didn't we?
No, but I, I think that this is talking about the county clerk is responsible for communication disclosure concerning county benefits. So here's the paper, here's what you have. And then it follows up with saying, these are laws and regulations. And then, "In addition, you may reach out to the human resource designee if you have further questions." I guess is how I read that.
Okay, yeah, and how you just wrote it, I agree with you on that. So would that designee, for example, be the employment company that we go through? Because they're, they're not gonna be familiar with that.
Which also brings up another sticky.
Right.
Problem.
So then at the bottom of that, it says, "If the cost of the plan changes, the employee deduction will automatically change." That does not happen. If the plan changes, we let the employees know they have to choose whether they want to go with a higher rate that the county has decided if the county's picking that up or not. So this whole paragraph is wrong.
In the very last paragraph?
Yes. We would never just automatically change employee deduction automatically.
Now, page seven.
Twenty-one.
So I think, yeah, it doesn't hurt to look at that.
Let me show you. Yeah, I mean, we can get, try to get a little bit more information, but in talking to Jeremiah Reiman. He said, "As provided in the WCCA's county commissioner handbook, the county clerk is responsible for county payroll duties, see Wyoming Statute eighteen dash four dash one oh two B, including premium and benefit payments. However, there's no specific Wyoming statute establishing the county clerk as a county's personnel officer." So the statute just says the premiums and benefit payments, not the rest. And he admits it causes a lot of confusion.
Number three above that, paragraph. Yep. "Notice of any material modification of the plan. Any participant or beneficiary who's claiming for benefits under an employee benefit plan that has been wholly or partially denied will be notified." That does not happen. The Board of Commissioners cannot, because it says then, that, um. "Any beneficiary who wishes to submit the claim for review by the Board of Commissioners are included in the applicant, applicable benefit document. If a review of the denial is requested, the Board is to review the denial of the claim." The county commissioners cannot help the applicant with the denial of the claim. So by this being in here saying that you're going to help an applicant with their claim is false. You guys cannot help an applicant with a claim.
Well, I think it would be a HIPAA thing that we couldn't help with.
So this definitely needs to be taken out.
Yeah.
Number three.
Number three.
Okay, or do we want that responsibility?
No. Um.
Twenty-seven? Yeah, I do, but I mean, I think it's part of this vacation stuff that we've already got. Number twenty-eight, I have what Ed brought up, how much carryover for him.
Okay, so I have a question, and it was brought up to me by, um, someone else. So sick leave is a benefit that the employees earn, and they get the eight hours. But when they retire, quit, or are terminated, they're only paid a third of what they accrued, and they're paid that at minimum wage. So that benefit that they earned. They're not getting paid what they earned. They're only getting a third of what they've earned. And they're only getting paid at minimum wage instead of their actual wage.
I guess we can look at that to see if it's at some kind of state.
So I mean, I don't know.
I'm actually surprised we would do that, because usually.
Right, so.
Sick leave, you're just, you don't get paid out for sick leave you didn't use when you quit job.
Right, so I don't know if that's why we do that.
So what are you wanting to do with it?
I just, I just wanted us to look at it, because it's, they're earning it at their eight hours. But we're only paying them out a third of it when, when they leave. They earn it at, say, twelve fifty an hour, but when they're leaving, they're only getting minimum wage for it.
That, I don't, there might, I don't know if there's any legal thing, legal legalities on that where you even have to pay any sick leave out when employees left. You know, vacation stuff that's earned, you're pretty much required to pay that out. Sick leave, I don't know if there's any legality that you pay sick leave out. You know, if there's a question about that, it's like, we'll be thankful you're getting a third of the, the hours at minimum wage. Otherwise, a stick in the eye and gone.
So.
On that end of it. It, it sounds like the employee is really getting hosed over. But in reality, they're actually getting a, a benefit when they're leaving. If we, if they had that much sick leave left.
But it's one of their benefits that they're earning.
Yeah, well.
As they're employed.
Right.
But they won't be employed, they don't have anything left. To me, it's not always going to be, I, I see what Commissioner Wagner's saying too. It's, I've never been at a company that paid me my sick leave when I left. And I think that's a pretty good benefit at five dollars an hour, whatever the minimum wage is, but.
That was my question.
Good, Michael, could you look at that, could you look into that for us?
Mm-hmm.
I can.
Just to confirm.
The legality of sick leave paying out.
Hey, sick leave was eaten illegal requirements.
I don't think it is.
After termination.
I don't think it is, but I can confirm that.
Do you have anything before thirty-four?
Thirty-two. And maybe, this is me not having a clue how the world works, but many holidays falls on Saturday preceding Friday, will it be observed? Or if it falls on Sunday, the following Monday is observed, is that's normal?
Yep. Okay, so thirty-four, under seven twelve. So this says, "Approval of such request shall be for," oh, last sentence. "Approval of such request shall be forwarded to the clerk's office so that the resumption of benefits can be made upon the return of employees. Employees granted leaves of absence who desire to keep their medical insurance in force must sign a request for such with the clerk's office and make arrangements to pay their insurance premium during the time they are on leave of absence." So unpaid leave of absence, the only time you can keep your insurance is like if you're on Cobra. So not all benefits will continue without employment act, without the employee actually working.
What about with military leave?
So that's under something totally different.
That's a military leave.
This is under unpaid leave of absence. This is just if you.
So unless they.
I'm just, yeah, I gotta.
Decide to leave.
You can't continue your insurance.
You can't. So this definitely needs to be looked into.
Let's talk about Cobra a little bit further down, but that is confusing because it should be Cobra.
Cobra is when you, like, quit or retire and you're gonna continue it on for like years. Cobra's not just a, let's pay Cobra and then come back to work. Cobra's like a.
When you're unemployed from now on.
Would you leave, would you terminate, whether you leave your job or you're terminated.
When you're terminated or you're retired, yes.
Or retired.
And that's only for like a year.
On that same page, that seven eleven personal time, Becky, is that something we've always done?
Yes. And you get that the minute you start.
Yeah.
You get two personal days per calendar year. Those do not carry over, you either use them or you lose them. Okay, so thirty-seven is really confusing to me, because I understand this if you have an inside IT person, but where ours is not local. And I don't even know, I don't think that this has ever been done, and I don't think this is being done. But if there is an issue with an employee, this needs to be brought to the attention of the department head first. Not have IT get into our employees' email, and then take it to the county attorney. IT should not be in our employees', like Golden West should not be in our employees' emails without the county coming to us first, that there could possibly even be an issue with the employees' email. Because this says, the county has the right to monitor any and all of its computers with or without the employees' consent. This includes, but is not limited to, monitoring internet usage, which is fine, viewing any downloaded or uploaded material, reviewing emails sent or received by employees. So our emails are not public record until that goes through the county attorney's office. But Golden West should not be in there going through the employees' emails. I mean, what, what happens if some, for some reason, something's in there with socials and that gets sent on? I mean, if there's an issue, Michael needs to come to the department heads or something and say, hey, you need to discuss something with your employee. This is just, I don't know, oversight of?
Oversight, I think.
Big time oversight. If there's an issue, that it needs to be brought to the department head or elected official. I don't know, this is so bizarre that this is even in here.
I think that was anticipated when most, you know, counties or organizations have their inside IT people.
Local IT, yeah, that's, I think so too.
There could be problems with employee confidentiality if we have Charles digging through emails.
Right.
So we have to rewrite that, I think, a little bit.
A lot, there's a lot in here that, when I really got to reading into this, this is crazy.
So what would happen if, using examples that we've faced this past year, if there was inappropriate emails being sent between employees, how would that be discovered?
That's the other problem, how do we discover it? I don't.
Isn't there a security monitoring that?
Yeah, you can't get into stuff.
I think that it's, I don't think that it's a major deal to have this in there. It just needs to be stated with cause, the county has the right with cause to monitor any and all of its computers. So it's not, we're going to monitor your everyday use and whatnot. I mean, there's, there needs to be a reason, and it goes through the proper channel.
It definitely needs to be reworded differently.
Is there any sort of, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Well, I was gonna say, I think there's security programs where they, they'll flag emails by certain words.
Oh, there's, we can't even download anything.
If that's what they're talking about here, it's just kind of generic.
I like the cause thing, because then that limits it to, if there's, you know, some problem with the cause, you can't be pulled over without, while you're speeding or you cross the line. And I think the department head should be notified, in my opinion, unless it involves the department head. Then it needs to be handled by the HR person without the involvement of the department head, until an investigation is done.
So right now, they have such security on our computers. Like when I, we used to go to, like all the county clerks, other counties' websites for stuff. They've gotten us, so we have to now call them and say, would you please give us permission to go to Campbell County's website? Would you give us permission to go here? I mean, you can't probably go anywhere on our computers. They're really secure. So with that whole section, it was the seven twelve? No. Eight oh one? Email monitoring.
So, Commissioner.
I, on the email monitor, monitoring, I, I think we have to have that in there because of some of our lessons we've learned. I think you have to give people the understanding that we can monitor what they're doing with cause. As long as you put them with cause.
I think that's a positive, if you should put it with cause.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it should be the department head's responsibility, I guess, to make sure. I just don't know how to monitor what this system we have right now. Yeah, I just don't know how you catch something.
That's kind of a question, Michael, like our emails, they're public record, but they're not released to the public unless for cause, like where a judge or somebody makes them release. You know, am I correct on that?
For records requests.
Yeah, they're, they're not public record unless it goes through the proper channels, isn't it? They're, they're public record, but they take certain criteria to get access.
Some of that stuff might be privileged under the statute.
But it takes the right access to.
With cause and notification to department head or elected official, and/or elected official.
I just don't know how we monitor all that as a department head, because how do you?
No.
Well, you wouldn't.
You could still, I mean, I guess they can still monitor about, you know, if, if there is an issue with my employee, and they don't contact me, and they just let you know. I mean, I want to know that there's an issue going on in my office, and they're looking into my employee. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't want it to just go directly to you and us not know that there's an issue going on in our office.
The only thing I'm thinking of though is like, how do we even get there with our setup?
I don't know, that's what it says. This monitoring may include, but is not limited to inadvertent reading by information technology staff during the normal course of managing the email system. Review by the county legal department during the email discovery phase of the litigation, observation by management in cases of suspected abuse, abuse, or to monitor employee efficiency. So I mean, it's just weird, are they sitting over there just reading our stuff? That's what just.
I think that would be only.
Really bothered me.
I think it'd be more along the lines of transferring things or doing, helping you with something, you know. Oops, I read the headline of your email, I don't, you don't have to go in and open the emails. I don't, why, A, why they would be interested in the first place? And B, you know. And you probably shouldn't be doing anything confidential on it anyway.
I know that it's written in here, but I guess my question is, what's the normal course of management on the email system? I mean, the wording's there, but what is that procedure?
Well, that's the thing, we don't have an internal IT, you know, department, so. It's probably up to the department head if you ask me, if I'm an IT person, internal IT person.
Well, I mean, there's not supposed to be any personal stuff going on on the county computers anyway, so. I mean, I guess we have to trust our employees that they're not doing any personal stuff.
So we're not getting them printed out or anything, like a web time, or Golden West, or if somebody's Googling?
Oh, yeah, we get, we get a report.
Okay, so you, you get some warnings?
Yes.
You see somebody on there for twenty hours out of their forty hour a week, you're going, hey, uh, what's the deal here?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, so there is somebody.
So there is some monitoring, okay.
Yes, so.
Okay.
Um, so. So it says, observe and record all information under written accident, accident report to the county attorney.
What page are we on, Becky?
Forty-eight, sorry. At the very bottom. So that needs to come to our office, because we have to send that to the county insurance. So that doesn't go to the county attorney or the HR.
For accidents?
But, yeah, when the vehicles are in, we have to send that to our insurance.
Vehicle, van, building. But it would still go into the personnel file on an accident, so I mean.
Personnel files or mail. This we have to send to our insurance company so that we can get the money back on the vehicle.
Right. But I'm saying if we go against the employment history, the record, you know, if they've had one accident, ten accident, whatever.
Right, and that goes in the.
Maybe just include the county clerk, clerk's office.
Yep, that should be CC.
And that goes for workman's comp as well. Because we file a workman's comp.
So that would be another one that would probably be CC'd.
What page are we on on that one, Becky?
Um, it says forty-eight, but I'm not seeing it too much. Oh, right there, forty-nine, under, under medical emergency or injury to the public or employee. So both of those sentences. If an employee or member of the public experiences medical emergency or injury on county property. Oh, that one, maybe the employee witness must notify the county insur, attorney. Then the second paragraph, if an employee is injured on the job, his or her supervisor, department head, or elected official must be informed in the Wyoming workman's, workman's comp. And incident, accident report filed with the county attorney, that needs to come to us, because then we handle that with, with this comp too.
So just need to be added to that, is what you're saying.
Well, I don't, HR and the county attorney, they don't do anything with that.
Well.
They don't. Ever. All in my office.
We talked about the administration of it.
Well, you don't need the reports, you don't do anything with them.
I mean, that's different if it's, if it's an actual contested claim or something, right? Yeah, you're just talking about the.
If they need you, and there's a claim and they're frightened, then we'll let you know, but, yeah. And then that's all I have.
So Garrett mentioned our last meeting about possibly shortening it up. And I know that the elected officials wanted to do that. And Nathan mentioned that also, I, I talked to Janie a little bit about it, and I think, you know, in my opinion, we could do that. We could have, we could have the handbook and then have in, take out the appendixes from the, the handbook that goes to employees, and maybe even the definitions. And then have all of that in a binder in each office, and also have it on our webpage under employment and personnel, so they could always get to it. Even if they were at home, they could pull up the webpage and get that information. That would save us, it would save us around forty-five pages to print out for the employees. Those are the things that are most likely going to change, because they're federal laws, and they're always changing. So it'd be easier possibly to do the changes if, if there was just binders with those in the offices. And everything, you know, is kind of gone over in, in short version. And then the appendix is actually the laws. So I don't know, what, what do you think of that, doing it that way? Having, and having, having a note in, in the book that says the appendixes that are mentioned and definitions of, and samples of forms are in your office for your use and also online.
I got to page forty, and that's when my eyes started freaking out. And I realized there was twelve more pages left, and then I got into this, and it was my exact thought. This doesn't need to be in the employee handbook, this is a, this is additional reading, if it applies, and you can find it here, per se. I like, is it important? Yes. It's not not important, I think it's important that it's available. But honestly, if you're expecting an employee to go through all this, I, there's, maybe I'm a bad employee, but there's an email I haven't read the book.
I, I agree, because most of the times you get the book, the handbook, the one I got from NBI was like that, it went up into a cupboard, and I never even really. If I needed something, I'd look it up, but are we okay legally to do that? Is there any issues with us having the main books with the department heads and the online, and then giving to the employees with reference to where to go?
Yeah, I think that could be a possibility, to say, you know, we're, this is the appendix, you can get it, you know, at this office. Where your, where your department head is.
I was just, I was hoping that it wasn't misinterpreted. All I was focused on was a condensed version of it, to where it's a little bit more welcoming of that employee, not only to consider the abbreviated version of it, but if they were concerned about the, the details, obviously, the department heads. And the full version would be available to them. Also, printing costs and things like that on, on all of our employees, that would be a safety in the future. Also, that was, that, that was something I would like to stay focused in on the, the approval of the main handbook. That is something we could follow up with the condensed version, I think that's, we probably don't need to complicate that portion right now.
Yeah. I mean, in the first three, four pages, I mean, I've read twice already that we retain the absolute right to terminate any employment, employee at any time. I've read that multiple times throughout the whole book, but, I mean, that's just an example of Garrett said. I mean, there is a lot of redundancy in places of things that, to read it, okay, I get it. But I have a couple other things that we can, if you guys.
Go ahead.
Page seventy-one, under anti-violence policy in the appendix G, the first paragraph, it includes acts of violence committed by employees, members of the public, relatives, acquaintances or strangers against a county employee in a workplace that are regarded as location. I wonder if it should also include electives in that sentence? I mean, you are kind of an employee technically, but I don't know that would, maybe it shouldn't hurt to add that in there. And then on the third paragraph down, it says, in order to. it says, in order to maintain workplace safety and integrity of its investigation, Weston County may suspend employees without pay if any, in investigation. Would we ever um, suspend an employee without pay if we haven't?
Uh, highly unlikely. We usually be the administrative lead with pay pending investigation because you don't want to get in a spot where you got bad information and then all of a sudden you're in a much worse spot than when you started, so.
Yeah, I, I do not like that part.
Can do that.
Because I think not only do you further risk the chance of further inflaming the issue by now this person doesn't have a living wage. I, I think that people have a right to face their accusers and, and, and once you've been accused of something until you're convicted, I.
Do you just want to remove that?
I think it's worth Jeannie looking at, give whatever Garrett can give her to say, should we do this as a law is to do this?
I mean, it'd be very, very rare. I mean, that, it might be.
She might have it good.
There might be extreme examples. It might be necessary, but very, I can't remember the last time I've seen that.
Can I ask you to clarify something for me real quick? On the first paragraph, are you talking about, um, includes acts of violence committed by employees, members of county employees? Do you, is that where you want the.
Yeah, I just wondered if elected should be included into that sentence because if we have an anti-violence policy, it applies to everybody and.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't, it, it says employees. I mean, it's probably, but some people, you're elected, you're not an employee, you know, kind of a, I, I don't know. Maybe it's just a.
It's, wouldn't, it's, wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you're an accountable.
Right.
You have, you are accountable if you're an elected official, I think. Page seventy-three, under reasonable suspicion testing. It says a trained supervisor will make the decision, um, whether you're impaired, I guess. And it says to infer the reading on page seventy-four. Are we, have we been doing this or is this a new thing? Are we trained? Is somebody being trained?
So the only ones that now, right now are required to do drug and alcohol testing is Ruben Bridge because they are C D L and Jim is trained.
Yeah, but what if your employee shows up and has alcohol on the breath? That's the same situation. I mean, you don't.
I would call law enforcement.
Okay, so, I mean, as long as.
That's what we do.
We understand that you are the supervisor.
Not trained.
Yeah.
And I would call law enforcement because they are trained.
Because it says any employee from Weston County reasonably suspected. I, I think that something needs cleaned up there. I don't, you know, I don't have an issue with it. It just needs to.
Actually, we would probably call law enforcement because.
Fine.
He's trained.
So instead of saying a trained supervisor, it should say a trained, something else?
Or a trained supervisor or somebody designated by the.
Not.
Or designated.
County or whatever. Or a county designated.
Okay.
Because I honestly don't think that the county needs to train all of the supervisors and elected officials because then you put them at risk of what if they're not drunk and you have thought that they were and then they come back into the county because you wrongfully accused them of coming to work drunk and they were just sick or something else.
Well, either way, you're going to accuse them because if you call someone in.
But if you call someone and they recognize the symptoms as, no, they're sick, they're having a medical emergency. That was on them, not you. You just recognized they were having symptoms that weren't normal to their everyday routine.
And that's going to fall under the word of reasonably and at that point, where's the boundaries of that? Reasonably suspect.
You know your employee's not acting normal. You call in someone who is trained to recognize the symptoms that they're not acting normal.
They could be framed. You could be framing them. Just, you know what I'm saying? Where's the protection for them? I understand.
Okay.
On the next page, number five. It says all safety sensitive employees will be selected by testing using a computer-based random number generator by a third-party provider. Are we doing this?
Yes.
And who's the party, the third party?
It used to be clinical laboratory.
Okay.
That's, that's Jim and Ruben Bridge.
Okay.
And that's a D O T requirement.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's, that's beyond our control. That is required by D O T.
And the hospital is contacted by that company and then Jim is contacted.
Good enough. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure it was being.
They throw our names in, their, that boy's name can be cool.
In the very last paragraph, it says alcohol testing will be performed within two hours of the determination and no longer than eight hours after the determination.
Doesn't have to be done right away?
I, I just find it odd that we would have, you know, it's, drug, drug testing will be conducted within eight hours of the determination and, and no later than thirty-two hours, but alcohol testing will be performed within two hours of the determination and no longer than eight hours after the determination. So it's giving you a window to, to try to hit. It's, it's saying best practice is to do it within two hours, right? But no later than eight hours. I, it just will be performed within two hours of the determination. It's kind of a weird. I mean, if you can't make it, can't make it, it's just, you have an eight-hour window and best practice is, is to do it immediately. I guess, but.
That could be in case, like, if you had an accident and you were being medically treated, you might not be able to get to it for the first two hours, but.
Yeah.
I take that wording, it probably pulled right out of the D O T manual.
It could be. I don't know. And then on seventy-seven, employee training. Weston County Attorney's Office or the H R designee will provide one hour per year of education and training on drug abuse and alcohol misuse to all employees. I assume that hasn't been happening, but we're going to start that. And then seventy-eight, copies of drug-free workplace and substance abuse guidelines are available to county attorney's office. I assume that's another thing we're adding to our, there's many lists of things to do.
Yes, and that is something that we're going to need to discuss too.
I had one back on page fifty-one. Right there, signature page, says we, the undersigned county commissioners, adopt on behalf. I, I feel uncomfortable in adopting on behalf of the departments. I think they should read, we, the undersigned county commissioners, adopt this handbook. Not on behalf of somebody. We are, we are adopting, it's up to the department heads. They're about it.
I mark, I mark that too. So that signature page, I think, needs to be taken out and each department head needs to sign themselves and the elected officials of their board adopt.
I, I.
Okay, it's fifty-two. You want it to be separate?
Fifty-one.
I think fifty-one stays there, but it just rewords it that we, the board adopted it.
You guys are signing on behalf of the department heads.
See, I want that on behalf removed.
Well, no, you guys signed it in the front. You guys already have your own signature.
We signed it on the front?
Let's see, great.
Yeah, we did, if there didn't. Very, under the first cover, very, the second page.
So that's going to be done, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, because, because you guys sign it and then this is your signing on behalf of the department.
Yeah.
So I had put a note too, the commissioners cannot sign on behalf of the department.
I would strike that whole thing because we are signing it up here on the very first page.
I'm not sure we can sign.
Yeah, I feel very comfortable signing on behalf of them.
If you remember, we, well, I don't know, we spoke to Jeremiah about it. We, he said it was admirable that we would get an input from our county employees and department heads, but it's not required, nor is the signature to accept the handbook. So, yeah, I agree with what you're saying. It needs to be put in there, but we wouldn't sign it on behalf of the department heads. It should be just the commissioners, but it's one not necessarily to sign. If they say, well, I'm not signing, it doesn't mean the rules don't apply to them. We're adopting the county handbook as a, as a state, in the handover. There's no variations of it.
Well, and on, I forgot, on page number one, this was taken out. It was on there before, but then it was taken out. On number two, after treasure, it, it was in parentheses after the last one. If they elect to adopt the county employee handbook, it was removed from the previous version that she sent us.
So what do you, come back?
If they'll, if she'll add that back in. After assessor attorney commissioners, clerk, clerk of district court, coroner, sheriff, treasurer, and then in parentheses it says if they elect to adopt the county employee handbook.
Do you want it added back in? Did you get that for sure?
Um, well, are we back on page fifty-two?
On one, page one, sorry.
But it's not in this draft, but it's removed from this draft.
So she said nothing changed out of the one that she had sent us, but that was removed on page one.
I don't know why I didn't have that.
So, yeah, it's not in this draft.
Oh, okay.
It was in the draft before that.
So if you'll add that back in parentheses, after treasure, if they elect to adopt the county employee handbook.
Okay.
I got a question on this. A lot of work's been put into this handbook. A lot of money's been expended. I think we're headed in the right direction, but simple question. What is our assurance, if the department heads sign this handbook, what is our assurance that they will abide by it?
I don't, I don't think we can make the department heads do anything, but their employees are county employees who need to sign it and need to abide by it.
I agree, and need to. What, what is the assurance that, that the abiding by it will be, will happen?
The, there's no assurance of an employee doing what you want them to do ever. It simply is, uh, covering us. Liability-wise, we've told them what's expected of them, what our rules and procedures are, what our benefits are. And then if they don't, if they don't abide by it, then that can be used against that employee as far as, um, their employment goes and, and their annual reviews, um, salary. And if they, if they are terminated, um, then that can be used to show that we told them the right thing to do when they refuse to.
I guess, where my direction is a little bit more maybe department head related. Um, say for instance, we, we implement the, the handbook and we've got a, a department head that says, I'll sign the handbook, but there's going to be things that I'm going to continue doing the way that I've always done it, which are not supported in the handbook. Well. Is this a suggested handbook or?
The ugly answer to that is, again, what Jeremiah said, then if an elected official says, well, that's great. I'm not adopting it. I'm not going to enforce it with my employees. Then, the ugly answer to that is, is then the purse string gets pulled, it's a book. They are a county employee. And this is for rules that you are expected to support for your county employee. And if you do not, well, then the consequences are maybe that position is not necessary as a county employee. And, I mean, he said it, it's not a fun thing, but that's where our strength lies, is with the budget. We can say, we're, you know, not saying we would, but I'm saying with the department head saying, fine, you don't want to follow it, well, maybe we can do that with less people and we'll cut the budget.
Which I don't understand why he was told you that because state statute, elected officials are responsible for their employees in their office.
But you're not responsible for the budget. The county commissioners are. They are the legislators of the county. And if we went to you and said, hey, we're making cuts across the board, for example, and you're going to lose one employee, you choose not to support it. It's an ugly way to do it.
You're going to cut my employee because.
They choose not to follow the handbook.
To, to sign the handbook.
If they want to be employed by the county, they have to follow county rules. That's, it's not a free for all.
I mean, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but.
Well, but that's, but you're asking.
What you guys are doing right now.
But it would be pretty bad for the elected official to say, you can do whatever you want. You don't have to follow that county handbook, even though you're working for the county. You can't have a book waste. Question, Tom?
I think the importance of the book is merely for guideline and also for, like Vera said, legal protection for the county. We, we have guided you. This is what we expect out of you in the event that you fall outside of that parameter. Whether you've signed it or not, you potentially will be held to this fire and, and this is your guide and that's all it is. It's. I don't think that it, that's what it is.
Then, then becomes a court problem.
Yeah, or, or termination, or whatever.
So along with the vacation wording, um, I can take this list that we went over and hopefully I can get with Jeannie and we can change some of that wording. And then we send it out before our next meeting so everyone can look at it, uh, possibly highlight where she changed, so. Um, everybody can make sure it's still, it looks better.
Depending on court schedule.
Yes.
If she had, if they have time.
Court schedules, so, um.
So tentatively, we'll, as you know, the concerns will move to old business on the next agenda. And hopefully for approval, if we can get it all worked in there in time across our fingers.
Yes, hopefully.
Is there any other concerns on the handbook? Any other issues we want to bring up?
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
It is lunchtime. Do you guys want to take a break from lunch or continue on?
Continue on.
Okay. So on our new business, uh, oh, old business, I'm sorry. Uh, I brought up, we want to talk to the attorney on what would, what do we need to do to make sure we have an attorney here for, present for the meetings? Is there something that we can do to help you with that process?
Uh, I, I don't know. We've had a bad string last couple of months with court, district court judges being here on Tuesdays. I mean, two of them, I think, mostly come on Tuesdays. I didn't know if it, some, if sometimes maybe if it would, you guys would be open to the idea of doing afternoon sessions. Because it seems like a lot of the times our hearings are more in the morning. That might be a possibility.
Is Tuesday a regular day or is it a, is it a kind of a crapshoot on when those things happen?
Uh, no, they give us a schedule, but then they do move it sometimes. So sometimes we don't, it's a surprise to us to. But we have a general schedule of when they're going to be here and when they're not. Maybe we can coordinate that to make it work, but that, that, that's an idea I have is maybe do some afternoon session.
Is the board open to that? I guess it's the first question, whatever. And, I mean, the importance, I think we've all seen it, the relevance of having an attorney here for issues that come up so that we can address them and make decisions appropriately, but I don't know, but whatever, just open for discussion. Question, Tom?
Is it, uh, more often than not, it's on Tuesday? Is it more often than not, it's on Tuesdays at this court, right?
Uh, I know Castano is usually here one Tuesday a month. His, his day is usually Tuesday. And then, but it's, the thing is, like, Tuesdays used to more often fall on the off Tuesdays somehow.
That might change here because this month we have, from our last meeting in this month to our first in February, we had two weeks off. So it might just be how it starts hitting on them, hitting on that schedule.
Would it, I mean, would it do any good to visit with him about it a little bit and see if there's any? I know there's a, there's a reason for having court when you have it, but I don't know.
Uh, I don't, I mean, he's, those judges are so slammed in doing three counties. I think they, they make a schedule so far out, I don't know. I'm sure he's listened to you, but I don't know.
Do you have any afternoon court sessions normally?
It's more likely than not, usually the, we do have court with a district judge, it'll be in the morning, more in the morning. We do have afternoon sessions though. I think if they, if they, they would prefer to get out of here in the afternoon, that's just what I've gathered. I'm not going to speak pretty buddy.
So if, if we had sessions at, say, three, we'd probably most likely be available?
Be more likely, yeah. But I could get, um, they do send out a schedule and I could dig that schedule out, their district court days that they're here and maybe we can, I can bring that and we can kind of go through it and figure out what days are actually going to hit. It's hard to predict, you know, three months ahead, what's going to be actually happening.
Can you do it in blocks, for example? Like, you know, there's going to be, the schedule says, you know, April, May, and June is going to more likely be morning meetings or if we made the commitment to change it to a time that you could be here, or again, I realize it's not statutorily required, but it, it helps us in our process of making decisions and I think it benefits the county when you're, when you're here.
Right.
Just out of curiosity, I wonder other, how many other county commissions that are sharing these judges have the same issue on a Tuesday? That they're required to meet?
I think it's mostly just because of the size of my office and, you know, we just don't, we have.
And we're Weston County.
Uh, not even, yeah, we're just, we're just kind of small, we don't have much manpower. That's, it's not, it is what it is, it's not good or it's not bad, it's just, it is what it is. Uh, not even, yeah, we're just, we're just kind of small, we don't have much manpower. It's not, it is what it is, it's not good or it's not bad, it's just, it is what it is.
What's the board feeling?
How about I get, I get the schedule of the judges and I can bring it up next time and kind of go through it with you guys.
We want to table it till the next meeting, put it on old business and we can put a schedule, or hopefully we can put a schedule together where you're committed to being here or one of your representatives are committed to being at our meeting. Is the board okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll push it to old business next meeting. And you'll get a schedule out to us?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner, you had meetings in Upton, you want to talk about?
Yes, we managed to have a meeting in Upton last year and I think in the beginning of the year, we talked about possibly doing it quarterly and then, and then that didn't happen. So I, I would like to see us commit to going to Upton on a quarterly basis for a meeting. I think we had a nice crowd. I was very, very pleased that they brought a class from school, I thought that was great. And I think, I think it's something that we should commit to. I don't know if daytime or nighttime is better, and maybe we could ask the mayor.
Daytime would be better, because sometimes it happens, very rarely, that we'll have a meeting fall on the same day as a commission meeting. But, I mean, it did happen even recently. So that does happen occasionally, but just to make sure it's covered, morning would be ideal.
A regular time, nine o'clock?
Yeah, yep, yep. And our city staff can always make that available. Probably provide moments.
Is a quarterly commitment okay with the city of Upton?
Yeah, and I brought that up with city staff last time when that was discussed and everything was good to do quarterly meetings last year.
It would have to be the second meeting of the month. Maybe we could go ahead and say the last, the last month and quarter, the second meeting of that month. We could commit to going to Upton for the meeting.
Is that a motion?
Um, I can make a motion. I, I make a motion that we commit to going to Upton for commissioners' meeting, the second meeting of the last month of each quarter.
Second.
Discussion?
Just for clarity, so it would be the second meeting of March, June?
September.
September and December.
Would be the last meeting of that quarter.
Yeah, three, six, nine, and twelve, those months.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of that, the motion, it's been properly seconded. Say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion's passed, quarterly meeting in Upton, March, June, September, and December, second meeting of each of those months. Are you still in old business? Still, we're on old business. Oh, sorry.
On that, if we're going to do that, I think we need to try to find a company vehicle or a county vehicle, whether it's the assessor's office vehicle or whatever, to, so we're not paying mileage for anybody that's coming down. I don't know if that's possible. There's three or four of you guys elected coming down, maybe hop in together.
Bring a sheriff's vehicle.
There you go, just get a ride.
Can we take one?
Lights and sirens.
Is there, is there a vehicle available for?
Nope, we used to have a county vehicle, we used to have a county van.
If nothing else, could we just coordinate? If we've got travel on one, at least we could all just jump in together. Something's got, we all got SUVs or something.
We could take choice.
A motorhome?
Yeah.
So if possible, you want to limit?
It says in the handbook that we need to do that. And I don't know what, how often, I mean, I assume that assessor's vehicle's seating a fair amount of time, right?
I think they went back to the pickup.
Did they? Yeah. Like it says in the handbook, we should encourage people to try to figure out a way to get there without five vehicles going down there.
So are there, are there still an old business, was there?
There's three now.
Volunteer board was on there, liaisons, that was still in, Mr. Reviewers?
I've talked to a few people and most of volunteer boards are waiting for us to have a visit. And so we need to either do that, try to do that, and they didn't, they'd appreciate it. But on, on that same line, I feel like maybe I didn't go far enough when I suggested those things. I'm wondering if we should all just be advocates for the boards, split up the boards and have each one of us have four boards that were, were their contact if they ever have any questions or concerns. Maybe they want to talk to us about being on the agenda, maybe they want us to know about some project they're working on. You know, anything like that, that they, they know that I'm the person, they can call me. I, I will listen, I will be at their, I will be available for them and go forward. And it's just a thought that if, if we each had three or four boards that we, each of us is, is responsible for, then maybe we can keep the communication open in that way.
Discussion on that? So an advocate, what, an advocate for each board they call and then the commissioners assigned to that board would then update the board with any issues or maybe be proactive in spreading problems?
Hopefully if there's something you're, you have an interest in, I know Garrett's on the airport board, I know you're in this old way, so that takes care too, right there. But having someone, it's nice because, because you're on those boards, they already have an advocate here that knows what's going on at their meetings, knows what their problems are. I think that David would say if he had an actual one of us that he can call and we keep that, that relationship going and keep the communication going, I think things would be more consistent, especially with boards that, you know, we, we do need to communicate with. And the other ones that we don't necessarily hear from, it'd be kind of nice for us to be able to come back and go, hey, I'd like to tell you what they're, they're up to and they're working on this project and congratulations. Whatever's going on.
I'm completely on board with the communication and keeping things in the know-how. What I don't, where I see this going, the language is spoken properly, but where I see this going is that there's going to be a discouraging of those department heads in bringing, coming forth and associating and communicating at our commissioner meetings. That's what I don't want to discourage in having the commissioners involved in that definition. Nothing wrong with going to the meetings and finding out everything you want and you want to relay whatever, but I enjoy hearing the department information from those heads.
So you mean they would just come to whoever the advocate was and they wouldn't come to the meeting at all?
I don't know, if you're speaking for them, they might just not come.
Commissioner Todd?
I'd prefer personally that they're here in front of the entire commission. A, the word keeps getting thrown around of transparency. And if it's here in front of the board and in front of the world to see, then it is a more transparent process.
But to me, that would be one of your responsibilities as an advocate to say, you know what? We'd love for you to come, tell us what you're doing. You know, it, keeping that, some of them don't feel like they ever have anything they need to come before us and talk about, but we could encourage that, we can encourage that communication.
You know, of being on boards and this board, I feel we'd get better communication with these volunteer boards if, say, every quarter or every six months, we invited their chairman or vice chair to appear in front of us. I've had people come to our meetings and then they go somewheres else and what actually, the words transpired at our meeting get a little twisted around by the time it gets down to the other end of it. This way, if we got the chair or the vice chair right in front of us updating us on what's going on, it's their words to us, there's no, it cuts out any middleman. You know, even if it is one of us, it still cuts out something that we may have misinterpreted as a person versus if they're in front of all five of us, you know. I think we would get better participation and less pushback if we invited them every quarter or every six months just for an update. You know, and if they got a project going on, a big project going on, you know, hey, hey, come in, just stick your head in here every, every month or every two months, just whatever your project's changing, if they got a big project going, you know.
So you're saying including them in, on quarterly or every six month meetings that the boards come in and?
On the agenda, just put them on the agenda, hey, board update from this board.
And I think, I think that's a great idea. But how, how do we, I mean, do we, do we send out invitations or are we going to call them? Or back to, you know, keeping the lines of communication open?
I think our, the clerks, you just send out an invitation, hey, you know, the board commissioners would like an update from your board. And, you know, can you be available at this meeting? And you don't, and don't have to have all the boards here at the same time, you know, have one this month, one this month. You just kind of break it up, you know, stagger them in. You know, I, I personally think that'd be the, you'd get a better and honest feedback from them, you know. You know, and then also put that invitation out, if you have a project, feel free to come from us. Or, you know, if we as a board feel like, oh, man, your project's really going ahead or what's going on, invite them in sooner.
You said the board and the head of the board and the?
The, the chairman of that board or the vice chair, whoever.
Or any representative.
Anybody who wants to come to that meeting, say, you know, they have a member that's, you know, retired, living in town so the, so the chairman don't have to drive thirty miles into town for that meeting. You know, have one of their board members come in and give us the update, just an update from that board, any member of that board.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, my, my concern is just getting more communication between the boards and us and giving them the opportunity to be in the spotlight a little bit. They do a lot of hard work and nobody knows what they're doing, so I, if we could make a schedule where they came, I think that'd be great.
Would you be willing to put a schedule together on, on, on Commissioner Wagner's idea of, you know, a couple every month? And give it to the clerk so she can get it out to the, to the invitee?
Yeah, we can get together and figure out what would, you okay with that? I'd be okay with that.
We want to do a motion or it's up to the board?
A formal invite, I think, would be fine.
What's that?
Just a formal invite or guidance would be fine.
I make a motion that we put a schedule together and as the commissioner board send out invitations to our volunteer boards, asking if they would like to come to give us updates and give them a time to do so.
Second. Do we have a motion on the floor, properly seconded? Any other discussion? I call to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those against? Motion pass.
No, two.
Two more.
Discuss Zoom meetings, meeting procedures and bylaws, and then under new business elevate around.
Okay. Either one.
The, I just was going to let you know, I've been kind of waiting on the, the bylaws and meeting procedures till we get the handbook out of our hair. So once, once we get that done, I'll go ahead and, and send you each a copy in your email so you can start looking it over. And then we can possibly do a workshop to start going through it together and seeing what we want to keep and not keep.
So we'll wait for that email and then the following meeting will schedule a workshop for that?
One, one book at a time.
Right. You also had the Zoom meeting?
I, I noticed there's quite a few people on there today, it's really exciting. I still think, we've talked about it and talked about it and we were having trouble with our sound today. I just feel like we still need to put some. I just feel like we still need to put some time and effort into the system and make sure it works every time. Because there's still something going on, I couldn't get on when I was sick. So I know it's frustrating to be on the other end of it. And along with that, I, we talked about having two or three of us get trained, possibly by Charles, on how to set it up, how to get it going, troubleshoot, and we haven't done that. And along with that, I know you can do it on Zoom, I don't know if you do it on team meetings, but I really feel it's important for us to start recording our own meetings. No offense to Walter. Walter does a great job recording our meetings, but that is, that belongs to the newsletter journal, not to us. And it could not be used probably in a court of law, Michael might be able to tell you, because it does belong to them and can be edited. We need to have official recordings of our meetings that belong to us as commissioners. And that way, we could also put them on our website for the public to see.
So the reason that it will cost a fortune to put that on our website. The audio already is too big to put on our website. So the recording of that to go on our website will cost us a fortune. That's why a lot of the counties don't put that on there. So I've already looked into that, so just so that you're aware.
I, most counties have it. We could talk to the other counties, and it could, it could be just because we have a very antiquated website. I know, I know it's easy for us to record our own meetings if it's set up to do so.
We can.
Let me, Commissioner Wagner's first, and then Commissioner Todd, and then I'll, I'll get here.
Every month, we approve our meeting minutes. That is an official document that is kept on file forever. If there's somebody who wants to research and goes back, those minutes are what they go to. That's why it's critical that our minutes, they don't have to be lengthy, but they have to be precise on the decisions made. You know, some of the discussion stuff, that kind of falls great, but the decisions made is on that minutes that are recorded in this office, in this building, and it's permanent. So that part of it, about having it out there for people to come to research, somebody can go back a while back, like, oh, they may not have been here in person, but what they hear on that recording or see on a video or something, they're not here, they can actually assume what they thought it was meant to, not what actually transpired. They can make that decision for their assumption that that's what's transpired, and that is not actually what transpired. That's why our minutes are recorded like they are. And secondly, with the Zoom, several counties since COVID have gotten away from live streaming their meetings. That's something we are not required by state statute to do. You know, if we can do it for, you know, free, that's fine, but if we have to start dumping money into our Zoom meeting equipment and stuff, that's where I will have a problem with it, because it's not required by statute. And at one point in time, this county is going to have to start looking at what is required by statute that we can afford, and what is not required by statute that we're funding that we're not going to be able to afford.
I yield the floor, Mr. Todd?
I guess I was just basing along those same lines as that of documenting our meetings. Our legal meeting minutes are what Becky's taking right there, and we sign off on it every following meeting. And I don't know, you know, do we want to provide a forum? For one, it's not statutorily required to provide that to any legal hearing. I mean, our minutes are our minutes, and that's what happens, and we approve it. I just think going that far is kind of, I don't know if it's advantageous to us necessarily.
I just wanted to give a little information on my procedures on how I approach what I'm doing. Yeah, there are some things that get edited. You guys are signing the vouchers, I speed that up like 20, 25 times, whatever. And I silence that stuff, because there's a lot of chit chat, every once in a while a joke gets told, whatever. That's irrelevant stuff. However, I do let the people know on my videos that the original, unedited, is always available upon email requests to me, as long as I get approval of that with Bob Bonner. And I keep, unedited, this will be downloaded and copied over into the program that I use for producing the videos. But I keep the unedited at all times, and they are with the videos that get produced as well. If there is a part that needs to be used, like you, if somebody said about, maybe in court or something like that, with Bob's permission, that is possible. And I can't make that decision myself, but I will always pass it on. Whenever there is some editing, like the speeding up, once in a while, somebody coughs, I will bring the volume down on some of those things. But other than that, it's not edited, other than putting titles up. But I have unedited on every meeting, and I've got terabytes worth of storage space.
But they belong to the newsletter journal?
The unedited ones, I don't know, I would have to actually talk to Bob. I, I actually consider it kind of their, once I've edited it and put it on our YouTube, it is no longer mine, it is Bob Bonner's or Rob's, it belongs to them. Are the unedited ones? Probably, because I get paid to be here. But I don't think there would ever be a reason why he would deny letting that be used for any purposes that it, that they won't, maybe they're just interested in, I just want to hear the unedited. Okay. I've never had the request, but it gets put up there every time.
From my point of view, I think that there, there is, there's a difference between statutorily, we have to, and then there's the other question is, should we? The should we, there's a lot, I mean, I don't know how they do it, I'm not going to pretend to know how they do it. But as much as I hate, you know, City Hall goes and has their meeting up on Zoom, and it works, seems to work without link problems, and people can't get on, there doesn't seem to be any complaints with it. I think if we're going to have it, and it's at minimal cost, or no cost, because we have a system that works, we just need to, we've had intermittent problems, and there's a week or two that it goes and it's fine, and then there's a week or two, you get many complaints. I think that we just need to come up with a solution that's permanent and that helps our constituents. And people can't always come and check in on this, they have jobs and they go to work and they do those things. I think it's our job to make sure that it's accessible for the people, as we talked about transparency, making it as transparent as possible with as much as we can do. And that's not a criticism towards the clerk's office or any other office, it's, we have a system, for whatever reason it seems to mess up on a regular basis. We only have two administrators that I know that are listed on it, that would be Becky and Gilbert. If they're not here, or there's questions about it, then we don't run the system. It needs to be a little bit more uniform and a little bit more efficient, in my opinion.
And when it comes to like the live video and stuff, I mean, I used to go Facebook Live on this thing. Facebook's changed how they do it. I can't go live without it being portrait instead of landscape. That's ridiculous when it's spread out this way and not that way visually. So unless that changes, I have to just record it, and then I put it up when I can get it done.
I guess, you know, I understand that there's certain requirements by statute, but I'm, I agree with Chairman Taylor, it's, it's what we should do. Transparency with our constituents, a lot of them would like to watch our meetings, and like he said, they work all day. If they're on, if they're on our website, they can watch them in the evening. It, to me, it invites more communication and more understanding of what we're doing. And it keeps us accountable. If they can go in and watch the meetings, yes, I understand that our minutes are statutorily the thing we're supposed to do, but they are abbreviated to the point where it may say, David Klein came to the meeting and discussion ensued. We may know what the discussion was, six months from now, I may not, I may not remember. And, and certainly, the constituents reading those minutes aren't going to know. And if they're very involved and have a passion for the fairgrounds, they might want to know what Mr. Klein said. I just think we need to really look at that and have it be another way for us to record what we're doing and keep us responsible.
I just want to let everybody know that the minutes used to be a lot more informative until prior commissioner, or two prior commissioners ordered the county clerk to chop out all, you know, verbiage that wasn't just like discussion ensued, or the actual motions and stuff like that. The minutes used to be more thorough in explaining what the discussion actually detailed, but the county clerk was essentially ordered to no longer do that.
Any other discussion on this? I also remember we talked about, and former, or Commissioner Wagner, you may be able to help me on this, we talked about doing some, an upgrade of a set amount when Bob Bonner presented. We said we could probably use that money better in our own website. How long does it take now for us to get minutes up on our website, and when is it posted?
I give them to him right after our meeting.
But I mean, how long to do, till we see it on the website?
He does it as soon as I give them to him.
So they're on, we can look, they can look them up a day after?
Yes.
As far as the abbreviated minutes that you're talking about, I, minutes are, are supposed to be not abbreviated, are they?
They're not abbreviated.
So what's he, he talking about?
They used to be way longer, I used to put tons of stuff in the minutes.
Well, I mean, and it's our job as commissioners to approve it, and that's probably where that direction's going to go. But I do remember a specific example about the Zoom meetings where I had somebody calling and say, you know, it was Kerry Droste, and the minute said, Don, talk for Kerry Droste. That, somebody looking at those minutes is not going to know, okay, great, they're saying, what, what did they talk about? What, I mean, what was the discussion about?
During public comment, I'm not supposed to put what was discussed in public comment. You talked for Kerry Droste in public comment, and that is what I put.
Well, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying somebody doesn't know what that means. We have seen abbreviated versions in our minutes, they're, they're, and it's our job to go over them and make sure they're either approved or reviewed.
But in public comment, you don't put what is discussed in public comment. If they want to know, if they want to be on the agenda and have what is discussed in the minutes, they get added to the agenda.
Okay, and in that case, I understand what you're saying, but there have been abbreviated issues on?
If you have a problem with the minutes, you bring them up during the meeting, and they can be changed.
That's what I said, we have to, we're either pass them or not, but.
Coming to that, would, could we get those minutes sooner than the Friday before? So if we have changes, we can get them to you?
I send everything out the Thursday before.
Okay, Thursday before. But if we, if, is that soon enough, if we have changes?
Yeah, then you guys give me the changes today, and then I don't have to have them to the paper until the Thursday after. Make the changes in the meeting today, like if you guys had issues, the changes would be made today. And then they would be approved with the changes that were made today. You don't have to give them to me before the meeting, the changes are made today, at the meeting. That's what today is for. And then I get the changes done, and then I get them to the paper by Thursday.
Okay.
But I give them to you to review the whole weekend, everything that is in the meeting, that's why I send everything to you guys Thursday, so you have the whole weekend to review what.
And she's been really, I will say that, Thursday, you usually get them, now we have had some email problems, but they're, that's not her. Yeah, somebody got them yesterday.
I got them yesterday.
I got them yesterday, yeah.
Yeah, Office 365. Hopefully.
What's the pleasure of the board on this?
I, I would like, I would like to have us either meet with Charles or someone meet with Charles to see if we can work out the system, and possibly, I know Gilbert doesn't want to be part of our system. Perhaps two or three of us should have passwords and get trained on how to use it, once we get it going right. So if Becky's not here, we have a fighting chance. It seems like right now, if something goes wrong, everybody takes turns going up and trying to fix it, well, that's kind of not.
So you mean you want, you want to add a few individuals as administrators and have them trained so that they could?
Yes, and troubleshoot with Charles, see what we can do to alleviate some of our problems.
Is that a motion, or?
I'll make a motion to have, we'll say, two, two commissioners meet with Charles and be trained on the system. Have Charles go over it, see if we can fix some of the problems we, we have. What else am I missing? And I guess that's it.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second. Discussion, we have a proper second. Commissioner?
Does maybe, maybe Becky knows this, um, does Charles aware of any of the issues that we've been recently having, or is it?
So the only issue that we had is, last time it was the Office 365. And then this time, I don't know what happened to the volume, why it kicked, kicked the volume off, but.
There was, I don't know if it was or wasn't, there was a complaint a couple of weeks ago on a link, improper link on the website side of it, but I, I don't know where that ever went.
I think that was the 365 transition didn't?
That was because Charles put the wrong link, he hooked us to the wrong meeting. That was Charles's fault.
Nick, can, since you've been watching them, what do you think? Are we still struggling?
So the, the only issue I had with the link online would never work, and the agenda that I would get it's in a different format than agendas that you guys get. So the link would be dead on the agenda as well, but it's since been fixed for, I think, the last two or three meetings, not positive, where Golden West seems to be getting the link to the current meeting now.
So it's, it's not Golden West, it's our job job guy, but I've been sending it to him directly. Like I've been taking it off of the agenda that I send you guys, and so that seems to have fixed it.
Yeah, the link is active on my end, so that was the only issue.
And Max, I'll get a stick to, to there.
We have a motion on the floor, properly seconded, any other discussion?
Can you read the motion, please?
We are moved to have two commissioners meet with Charles and get trained on the system, and have Charles fix some of the problems that we have, to troubleshoot. So instead of have Charles fix some of the problems that we have, just have Charles troubleshoot.
Troubleshoot any issues we may have.
Commissioner Board?
Still two commissioners assigned to that, or no?
Two, three, I don't know, what, what is everyone's pleasure on that?
Well, if we're going to have a motion, I think we should.
Name it?
Yeah, there needs to be a designated two commissioners, so it's not ineffective.
Well, let's start volunteer who would like to be an admin on there and get trained on how that works. Nathan?
I would recommend that it's our chairman and our vice chairman.
Okay.
Is that okay? Nick, can we friendly amend your motion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Call the vote. All those in favor of having, um, Charles come out, check, troubleshoot the system, see if there's any issues with it, and have two admins, the chair and the co-chair, added to it with some training. Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed.
New business is elevator ramp.
White called me this morning. This is just for information. I don't feel like we should probably take any action on it because it's new. The elevator is working fine in the law enforcement building. They did have a power outage and couldn't figure out how to reset it. So they, they had an issue, but it was just a matter of troubleshooting, um, the issue and figuring that out. I think in the future, Nick has advised me, White Construction, I should say, has advised that we may need to look for a different elevator company. I'm not going to get into why, but, uh, it's, uh, probably coming down the pike. For our, and it's something we probably need to visit with Brandon about, um, if there's other options out there. But, uh, the ramp, they're ready to start coming, cutting it off. What they're going to do is cut it along the edge of the building. He says that there's a great potential for there to be some collateral damage to the existing brick, which we're aware of. He said it's, he's surprised some of the brick is in great condition when they were taken out. Some of the brick, some of it's in not so great condition. So we need to be prepared for that, along with the potential of, it may be ugly when it's done. And we didn't really designate a way to finish that. So there may be, come down the pike, uh, we need to look into a way to finish that wall. Uh, the windows in that wall are leaking horribly. He said they, they probably really need replaced. The ones by the secretary officer broken. He said the one that he pulled out was in terrible shape, rotted and leaking pretty bad. But that's where they're headed next. So, um, I guess the board just needs to be aware of a little update on what's going on.
Did we approve? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we, I mean, Nick did make us aware of our stress. He made us aware that that going into, when that ramp is taken off, he doesn't know what's going to be under there or what it's going to look like. And that was, we have, we knew that going in, that it might be ugly. We're going to have to do something to fix it to make it look decent. So I just wanted to stress that, that.
But we didn't, there was no cost, uh, we don't know yet on that, or what we're going to have to do there.
Yeah, during that discussion, Nick had no, no idea, and he wouldn't give us any idea what any kind of cost would be.
Part of that.
Because it was just, he doesn't know what's under there.
And that would be from the entrance door on an angle down where the ramp currently is at, where it was made it up. However, that was, whether it was rebarred into the side of the brick or building or coming through out was poor.
Yeah, that's why I said that was basically going into that, removal of that, just kind of time material, because he didn't know what he's going to get into, because there's no way to, to figure out what was under there.
Right. So aye. Thanks for the update. Any, any other business needs to come forward, board? Thank you, commissioners. Meetings adjourned.
I know, no, I gotta take that.
You do, okay. I'm pouring off the agenda.